Good evening. I would like to call Monday, August 12th, Common Council Meeting to Order. Clerk Toronto, I believe you would like to make some comments regarding this meeting and other expectations.
Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone as speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for council and yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a certain agenda item, please submit your request in the chat. Directions to do so will be placed in the chat shortly. We ask that you provide your full name and address, as those are required for all speakers in at in-person council meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following into the chat, and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input. My name is full name, I live at address, and I would like to speak for or against agenda item. You will then be given five minutes to speak. Please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we would have Pastor Jose Yanis, please come up for the invocation. Oh, I'm getting ahead of him. Yeah, no, we would like the invocation as pastor. There you are. Thank you so much for coming. Yes, right up to the microphone. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jose Yanis. I'm the pastor from Iglesia Evangelica Príncipe de Paz on South Bend, Indiana. In this moment, we gotta pray, but I gotta pray in Spanish, okay? So, we gotta pray. Señor Jesús, en este momento venimos delante de ti, señor, dándote gracias por este día. Señor reconociendo que tú eres Dios grande y poderoso, en este momento señor te pido que tú bendigas a cada uno, señor Jesús de las personas que están en este lugar, que de todo lo que se va a hablar, de todo lo que se va a tratar, señor, que sea usted bendiciéndolo. Gracias Cristo bendito por este momento tan especial. Te pedimos señor que tú derrames o Dios bendiciones sobre esta ciudad, que tú bendigas a South Bend, Indiana. Derrama de tu poder señor, derrama de tu santo espíritu, que sea usted señor mirando las necesidades que hay en este lugar. Gracias señor Jesús, amén y amén. Gloria a Dios. God bless you.
At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Toronto, will you call the roll, please?
President McBride.
Present.
Vice President Naskowski.
Present.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers. Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Bolden Simpson. Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Present.
All nine are present.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the report of Subcommittee on Minutes. Clerk Toronto.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the January 3rd, 2022, meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. This recommendation for approval is made recognizing that three current members of the council were not seated in 2022, and as such, will be abstaining from any formal approval of old minutes.
Thank you. This time, I would like to entertain a motion regarding the Subcommittee on Minutes for January 3rd, 2022.
Move for approval. Second.
The motion is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Abstain.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the July 22nd, 2024, meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. Thank you. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to resolve to the Committee of the Whole.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried.
The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second and public hearing. I wish to share with you that bills that will be given a second reading and a public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. Clerk Toronto, first of all, I'd like to make a motion to accept Substitute Bill 35-24.
So moved. Second.
There's been a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstains?
Do we have to do a roll call?
We don't have to do a roll.
No, everyone's present. We don't have anyone online. Okay, cool.
All right. Motion passes. Clerk Toronto, would you please give Substitute Bill 35-24 a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 802 East Ewing Avenue, Councilmanic District Number Three, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The zoning and annexation committee met this afternoon, and we bring this Substitute Bill, Bill 3524, to you with a favorable recommendation.
All right. Is the petitioner present? I ask that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Good evening. Carrie Myers with the Department of Community Investment with offices on the 14th floor of this building. I'm here on behalf of Substitute Bill Number 35-24 for 802 Ewing and 801 Outgeld. Verdugo Ottenell is the owner, and the petitioner is requesting a special exception for neighborhood assembly use in the U1 Urban Neighborhood Zoning District to support the work of the LGBTQ Neighborhood Center. Bear with me, pardon me. Built in 1943 as a church, and up until about nine months ago, it's been used as a church. The special exception is required since it no longer functions as a church, and a church use would also provide these proposed services. In other words, because it no longer functions, as I said, as a church, it has to request the special exception, otherwise we wouldn't be here this evening. The proposed neighborhood assembly use is consistent with the character of the neighborhood as it will provide a variety of activities very similar to that of a church or other assembly uses. The proposed center will offer services such as after-school programming, support groups, and social activities such as yoga classes and adult board games. The proposed use should not adversely affect the use of any adjacent property values as the building has been historically used as a church and will provide a level of activity similar to that of a church or other religious institution. And I will mention that the property at 801 Outgeld is their associated parking lot that goes with the property. The proposed use is generally consistent with City Plan 2006 PF 1.2, maintain and enhance essential community assets. The proposed use will provide social and community-based services that will benefit the neighborhood. The building was designed as and historically been utilized as a church. Its proposed use as a neighborhood community center will not be out of character for the neighborhood. It comes to the common council this evening from the Board of Zoning Appeals with a favorable recommendation, and the petitioner is here. Thank you.
Would that petitioner like to have anything to say? Petitioner? Nothing to add? Okay. All right. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for the petitioner? If not, at this time, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Substitute Bill 35-24?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition of Substitute Bill 35-24?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
At this point, the public hearing on Substitute Bill 35-24 is now closed. I will now entertain a motion regarding the bill.
Motion to approve to the full council.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
All nine.
All right. Substitute Bill 35-22 will come before the full council with a favorable recommendation. I will now entertain a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole and pour it back to the full council.
So moved. Second.
Second.
It's been seconded and moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
The full council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading and action is taken regarding the bills that were heard during the Committee of the Whole. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Substitute Bill 3524 a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 802 East Ewing Avenue, Councilmanic District Number Three, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you.
Move for passage? Second.
I have to go through the process. I need to, I'm getting a recommendation first from the committee. So, hold that out. I'll come right back to you. Councilor Lee, is there a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole regarding Substitute Bill 3524?
Yes, Substitute, Substitute Bill 35-24 was heard in the Committee of the Whole, and it comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Dr. Davis?
I'd like to remove this bill for passage.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. The roll, please.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill 3524 has been adopted. Resolutions. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Resolution 2425 a reading?
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 711 to 713 Leland Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46616, an economic revalidation area for purposes of a six-year real tax abatement for Cooper Shutter's Family Trust.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, President McBride, the confirming resolution was heard by Community Investment earlier this evening and comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Presenter, welcome.
Hi, councilmembers. Thank you. Eric Lovich, Director of Growth and Opportunity, offices on the 14th floor of this building. The first resolution for your consideration is a confirming resolution for a tax abatement for the property that you see on your screen. This is a property owned by the owners of Number Six Scratch Kitchen. You may recall last council meeting, this council adopted, excuse me, a declaratory resolution that provided us this opportunity to confirm a tax abatement for redevelopment of this property. The owners plan to redevelop the property into a restaurant on the first floor and in the basement, and then restore residential units upstairs. They would also build a carriage house on the west side of the property to the left here of this overscreenshot. The tax abatement would be for six years. It's a mixed-use development real property tax abatement. The annual taxes that this property currently brings in are only about $2,700. With the tax abatement in place, as we've estimated, the taxes would be much higher. So, even with the abatement in place, we're confident that, you know, this property and this project will bring in more tax revenue to the city, and this provides a good tool as an incentive for them to make this investment, to improve the area. So, happy to answer any questions. I do know that Andrew Caspers is participating online. His wife Amanda Schutz was unavailable to attend and sends her regards. So, but Andrew is available to answer any questions that you might have, and I am as well.
Thank you, councilors. Are there any questions of the petitioner? And I'll yield to see if they wanted to add anything. The petitioner's on, are they online?
You're muted, Andrew. He must have said all he had, said all he had to say, all right.
All right. I think that Mr. Andrew must be good with Mr. Lovich's presentation. Thank you. At this time, I will turn to the public portion. Is there anyone in favor of Resolution 2425? In person or online?
I do not see anyone from the public or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Thank you. The same said. Do you see anyone in opposition of Resolution 2425?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
Thank you. With that being said, the public portion is now closed. Counsel, do you have any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Toronto, the roll, please.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Resolution 252425 has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, would you please give Resolution 2426 a reading?
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 1710 North Sheridan Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46628, an economic revalidation area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Hoosier Tank and Manufacturing LLC.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, President McBride, this bill was heard by Community Investment earlier this evening and also comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you so much. Presenter?
Eric Lovich, Director of Growth and Opportunity, offices on the 14th floor. For your consideration is a declaratory resolution for a personal property tax abatement for Hoosier Tank and Manufacturing LLC. Hoosier Tank and Manufacturing is a South Bend-based manufacturer. They've been in South Bend since 1991, and they make trailers, reservoir trailers for the trucking industry. Hoosier Tank is located near the airport. You know, as the, what they're planning on doing is they're planning on investing $4 million into expanding their existing capability, powder coat painting, I think aluminum processing equipment as well. Over three years, they intend to hire 15 new employees in addition to retaining the 112 employees that currently work at the facility. The 15 new employees would add an annual payroll of approximately $780,000 per year. It's very exciting that we're able to invest in our community, and with this personal property tax abatement, we're adding 15 jobs. Currently, we did a, we looked through tax records. Hoosier Tank and Manufacturing, this past tax year, paid about $90,000 in personal property tax. With the tax abatement in place, we're estimating that over the five years of the tax abatement, that their tax liability would be about $320,000. We're asking the council through this declaratory resolution to abate roughly $228,000 of that. However, after the abatement expires, after year five, our estimates show that the year six through 10 of them owning this property, they would pay an additional $140,000 approximately. Questions came up during the five o'clock meeting about the lifetime of this equipment. According to Hoosier Tank, the equipment would last 10 to 15 years. Given good maintenance, they are anticipating that it would last about 15 years. Our tax estimates look at roughly about that timeframe in terms of how they might depreciate the equipment. So, exciting project. We're great, we're grateful for their investment in our community. I don't know, I know that Mr. Maddox had a conflict. I don't think anyone else was able to join from Hoosier Tank, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for your presentation. Counsel, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Seeing none, I will turn to the public. This is the public portion. Are there any one wishing to speak in favor of Resolution 24-26?
I do not see anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of the bill in person or online.
Thank you. Same said. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of Resolution 24-26?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
Thank you. The public portion is now closed. Counsel, I'll turn back to you for comments.
I move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. The roll, please.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Resolution 2426 has been adopted.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you. Resolution 2423 has been tabled until the August 26th meeting. That didn't have to come as a vote to me. Thank you. Bill's on first reading. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill 3724 a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the first north-south alley east of Main Street between LaSalle Avenue on the south and south of Madison Street on the north.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 3724 to Public Works and Property Vacation on August 26th.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill 3824 a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 623 Olive Street, Councilmanic District Number Six, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I would like to motion to send Bill 3824 to BZA on September the 3rd and to zoning and annexation for public hearing in third reading on September the 9th.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill 3924 a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1006 Beale Street, Councilmanic District Number One, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 3924 to BZA on September the 3rd and to zoning and annexation for public hearing in third reading on September 9th.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. This time, counsel, is there any unfinished business?
Yes, there is. I would just like to return back to the issue of the position of the floor. I'd like to, we set that to September the 9th to follow up on that that we were working on earlier this year and have that meeting in the afternoon on September the 9th. and have that meeting in the afternoon on September the ninth. Because that was delayed. We had too many things on that Monday.
I will check with, I don't know what. Bob, I see you looking. I haven't had a discussion, so I don't know where we are with.
It's been on hold. Are you asking for it to be set for a committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay. That would be the rules committee.
September ninth is not available for me. I think I would, could get with the.
Pardon me?
September ninth, I'm not available in the afternoon on September ninth. So I will look. I will have to look at my calendar to see what day I am, but during the afternoon of the ninth, I'm not.
And it doesn't, I'm open to it not having to be on the council day?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said I'm open to it not being on the council day if necessary?
I will check the calendar and get with Clerk Toronto and the rules committee for a date and time to get with you.
I would greatly appreciate that.
Thank you.
And when will I be able to, so we'll probably know at the next meeting?
Yes, I'm sure I could be able to get with everybody and have a date by then.
Okay. I'm at peace.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any unfinished business?
President McBride?
Yes.
Thank you. I put this under the bucket of unfinished business because it deals with minutes. I just want to thank our clerk and clerk's office for the hard work that they have to, that they've been doing to catch us up on minutes. In the past couple of weeks, I approved forty-one meeting minutes over across three committees. So thank you very much for the work that you're doing to catch us up.
Thank you. Anyone else? At this time, I'll turn to see if there's any new business. Vice President Niskoski.
Thank you, President McBride. Just a reminder for everybody, the twenty-twenty-five citywide budget overview is Wednesday, the fourteenth, at five-thirty right here in the council chambers, and you should have been sent that via email.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that being said, I'll turn to the privilege of the floor. As a reminder, disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech and or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in an individual without notice forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. Individuals who wish to speak, please come up to the council and state your name and residential address. You are limited to three minutes. The maximum time for this portion is thirty minutes. And individuals should not be permitted to address any topics which the council has heard previously on the agenda tonight. And any requests would be assigned appropriately by the clerk's office or the president to the proper administration or council person. Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Don Foster, one thirty-two Chapin Street, South Bend. Section two-two, adoption of rules and regulations by the common council and powers thereto, aye. The council shall have the power to financially supervise and investigate all departments, officers, employees of the city, and to investigate the affairs of any person with whom the city has entered in, entered or is about to enter into a contract. The common council has repeatedly attempted to silence discussions on the floor, claiming several reasons for their actions. One, they assert that the common council lacks oversight over a state senator's office. Two, they argue that the matters raised are not pertinent to the city of South Bend. Three, state that David Niskoski does not have a contract with the city of South Bend two thousand and twenty-four. However, these statements reflect not only a misunderstanding of governance, but also a misrepresentation of facts to taxpayers and city residents. On February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, and in previous years, Vice President Niskoski signed and submitted a Uniform Conflict of Interest Disclosure Statement to the State Board of Accounts. But we cannot find one for two thousand and twenty-four. In two thousand and twenty-three, though, Vice President Niskoski wrote in the State Board of Accounts, "I was an employee and minority owner of Niskoski Plumbing Incorporated. My interest in the company terminated in two thousand and twenty-one. And I am not employed with the company. I have no involvement in management or operation of the company. My husband has a minor interest in the company." My question is, David Niskoski owned a minority interest in the company in February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. Does David or council vice president Sheila Niskoski own any of Niskoski Plumbing in two thousand and twenty-four? Do either of them have a pecuniary interest in the company as outlined in Indiana Code thirty-five forty-four one one four? If you look on page three and four, the Board of Public Works proposals between Niskoski Plumbing and the city of South Bend dated February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, Niskoski Plumbing submitted David Niskoski's signature and license. While David Niskoski is indeed a state senator, he is also a contractor for the city of South Bend, with his company having received millions in funding over recent years. It is imperative that these issues are addressed transparently for the sake of accountability and public trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sarah Foster, eleven thirty-eight College Street. Ninety-one days ago, Vice President Sheila Niskoski assaulted, intimidated, and attempted battery on my husband, Logan Foster, and has yet to be reprimanded or take accountability for her actions. The South Bend Code Ordinance is Chapter two, Article one, Section two dash two G, says, "The council shall have the power to discipline council members. When will the council discipline Vice President Niskoski's behavior? This is not the type of behavior that should be condoned by our elected city officials. Vice President Niskoski, please do the right thing and step down from your position."
Thank you. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Linda Bryant, thirty-two twenty White Maple Court, South Bend, Indiana. Ninety-one days ago, Vice President Sheila Niskoski assaulted, intimidated, and attempted battery on Logan Foster, and Niskoski has yet to be reprimanded or taken accountability for her actions. The South Bend Code Varying Ordinance, Chapter two, Article one, Section two dash two G, says, "The council shall have the power to discipline the council members. When will the council discipline Sheila Niskoski's behavior? This is not the behavior that should be condoned by our elected officials. Vice President Sheila Niskoski, please do the right thing and resign from your position today."
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Brendan Crumlish, ten ninety-one Riverside, South Bend. I'm a local businessman with an office at thirty-two fifteen Sugar Maple Court in South Bend. I'm here tonight as the president of Businesses United Four. We're a corporation representing twenty-five South Bend businesses. We are seeking fairness for the truly homeless in our community as well as a greater fiscal responsibility from our local government. And lastly, fairness and freedom for all media platforms to share and report on the actions of our government. All this is transparent and for the genuine improvement of the city of South Bend. I want to thank all of you council members, except Councilman Troy Warner, for meeting with us over the past six weeks to learn about our plans to protect the city from being overrun by more homeless immigrants from surrounding states and communities. We gained valuable feedback from their review of our efforts. At the close of the May thirteenth council meeting, Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski assaulted a legitimately credentialed member of the media after he addressed the council earlier that evening asking questions about local government contracting procedures. This was a fair inquiry from any citizen, businessperson, or member of the media. His questions were badgered back by Councilwomen Niskoski and McBride with belittling comments in an attempt to avoid his questions. Their contempt for the public speaker, Logan Foster, was reprehensible and a violation of all public procedural decency. No public speaker should be cross-examined for asking an open and honest line of questions. And Councilwoman Niskoski's subsequent assault on Logan was simply appalling. With that said, since then, this council has done nothing to sanction Ms. Niskoski for her actions. No rebuke, no censorship from her committee positions, not even an apology. And this makes all of you as guilty as she for ignoring her actions. Shame on you as a council for condoning her actions through your silence. Again, we are all here tonight to ask Councilwoman Niskoski to resign her position on this elected board of city representatives. This council must demonstrate stronger support for proper decorum and behavior. You have the greatest responsibilities to uphold the laws in our community. Please exercise them by removing Ms. Niskoski from this council and all of her committee assignments. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Logan Foster, eleven thirty-eight College Street. This is an important moment for the floor to present its concerns, and it's not a time for cross-examination by the chair. As of July third, two thousand and twenty-four, Nagatski Plumbing has received over four hundred thousand dollars in payments from the city of South Bend. This is the same Nagatski Plumbing for which Vice President Sheila Nagatski has previously been required to submit a Uniform Conflict of Interest Disclosure Statement due to her pecuniary interest in the company. Notably, the State Board of Accounts has not received this required disclosure from Vice President Nagatski for the year two thousand and twenty-four, raising serious questions from the residents and the taxpayers. While Vice President Nagatski publicly claims she is no longer affiliated with the company, her pecuniary interest persists. The documents I possess indicate that her husband, David Nagatski, is not only an owner of Nagatski Plumbing, but also submitted his signature and his plumbing license in the two thousand and twenty-four Board of Public Works application, which facilitated the disbursement of over four hundred thousand dollars to the Nagatski Plumbing business in just six months of two thousand and twenty-four. Ignoring the obligation to disclose such pecuniary interest would constitute a Class D felony, and it is critical for the council to investigate why Vice President Nagatski failed to disclose her and her dependents' pecuniary interests in the year two thousand and twenty-four. Why would the Nagatski family, or would the Nagatski family have secured the contract with the city of South Bend and the Board of Public Works if David Nagatski's plumbing licenses had not been submitted with his signatures in the two thousand and twenty-four contract? I think not. Additionally, despite claims that David Nagatski is retired, he provided his active plumbing licenses to the Board of Works two thousand and twenty-four contract to receive plumbing contracts from the city of South Bend. This matter deserves thorough investigation as it raises significant concerns about potential fraudulent conduct. Bob Palmer, Sharon McBride, and Sheila Nagatski have publicly claimed that David Nagatski does not have an active contract with the city of South Bend. If that is the case, why, why is his signature and license throughout the two thousand and twenty-four submittal with the city of South Bend and the Board of Public Works? If David Nagatski is retired, as you all claim.
Thirty seconds, sir.
If he is retired, as you all claim, wouldn't this be fraud? Knowingly submitting the license of a person who has retired, who has no pecuniary interest in the company, so the company can receive hundreds of thousands of dollars from a government entity? That sounds like fraud. My last comment, as I stand before all of you, I am again asking that Vice President Nagatski resign from her position as she assaulted me in the council chambers, as you all watched.
Time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Clerk Toronto, do you see anyone online wishing to speak at the privilege of the floor?
I do not see anyone online.
Thank you. With that, this meeting stays adjourned. Good night.